We're gonna call this meeting in order and stand for the pledge if you please.
My pledge to the flag of the United States of America. And here the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Amendments to the agenda?
Uh, yes sir, one. Uh, I'd like to add Liz Ambule, the town accountant, to the agenda, uh, as number, I guess, three A. She'd like to talk about, uh, electronic timekeeping for the staff.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any other amendments, I'm sure we could have put them all together? Nothing? Okay. Uh, we're gonna skip the meeting with the town treasurer, 'cause I don't see her. Let's do the minutes. Good.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of September sixth, as written.
Second. Any additions, deletions, or corrections?
No, they look good to me.
Good.
That's two weeks in a row.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Liz, I guess you can go and go, uh...
Can everyone hear me from back there? Okay. Um, Joe came to me and asked if I would look into a way to streamline payroll or use, um, an outsourced payroll service, like ADP and Paycheck, which is an electronic payroll system that, um, companies do use, um, quite successfully. So we looked into the cost, um, what it does, what it doesn't do, how it would interface with our current accounting system, which is Nemrick, and what positives and what negatives come with, with the system. The cost, preliminary cost, just out there without really getting into a lot of detail, is between eight and ten thousand dollars a year for your, your fees. And it's based on a per-month fee per employee. That was quoted to us from Paycheck. Um, we did not get a quote from ADP. Actually, we did. I, I just pulled it up here. And, um, so that's gonna be a cost every year, and then there's a six hundred dollar setup fee, um, to put the system in place. What the system does, it allows people, your employees, to log into a computer, use a cellphone app, or, um, another means of electronic communication to, to clock in. Push a button, I'm at work, and off they go. It allows them to clock out. So they would have to have access to a computer, access to a cellphone, and also be on the internet, um, for the system to work. Two areas of town, in our, in our town departments that don't have internet, I believe the, the water plant and the sewer plant, is that correct, John?
Yeah, the water plant has intermittent service and the transfer station does not have internet.
So that, that in itself is, is a bit of a negative, because we can't, we don't have internet down there for them to clock in or clock out. Um, also, some, I'll go with the positives. It's, it's pretty easy. Um, somebody else is doing the work. Um, they generally run the Paychecks for you, do the direct deposits for you, do your W twos at the end of the year. They also, um, will do your payroll taxes, um, your quarterly taxes and all that. So that's all there. They keep track of your vacation time, your pool vacation time, your sick time, and whatever other benefits that we offer. What we have to do, it's not gonna change our workload at all. It may actually make it a little bit more challenging than what it is now. Because ADP, Paychecks, and I haven't found one out there that speaks to Nemrick, meaning that they'll send the information to Nemrick, which is our accounting system, we're gonna have to put it in manually.
So you, so in, you're gonna have to do what you already do anyways?
We're gonna have to do what we already do anyways, um, because they, the two do not talk. So whatever, I have to put the, the hours in anyway. They'll do all the paying of, of the, of the staff, and you can get this electronic method going. However, we're gonna have to transfer the money into Nemrick, so we know that, that we have the APs done, that we have the payroll done, that everything is transferring back and forth in general ledger, and then, um, we still have to double-check everything. So we're, it's the same, it's probably a little bit more work than what we're doing now, um, to have one of these services. Plus, I think, cost-effective wise, it's, it's fairly expensive from the information that we've gathered. If the goal is to streamline payroll, to make it less onerous at this point in time, um, Joe and I talked, and we think if you can, if you wanna streamline it, what we would recommend is some of the line items for instance DPW, summer work, winter work, cemetery, take those out. When an employee works for DPW, they clock in at eight, clock out at six, and they don't have to keep track of, I'm doing three hours for cemetery, I'm doing two hours for, for snow plowing, or, or winter work, and X number of hours for summer work, and then that alleviates all those line items and alleviates the staff there, as well as our staff, from having, having to double-check and add those up to make sure they all equal. What it will do to your budget is, instead of having those different line items, you're just gonna have DPW. You're gonna have the sewer plant, you're gonna have the water plant. And, um, the state of Vermont is no longer requiring summer work and winter work hours to be divided. They're gonna take it as, as one. So if you wanted to streamline it, that, that would be our recommendation. And talking it over with Joe, we, we decided it's probably not in the town's best interest financially to, to go to an outsourced payroll system. Um, we don't think that it's going to save you, it's not gonna save you any money, it's gonna cost you money. And the time that is invested in it is, is gonna be about the same, if not more. And that's because their system does not communicate with Nemrick, which is what we use. What most, I, I don't know another town that doesn't use Nemrick. I tried to call a town that is also looking into ADP to see what hurdles or positives they've had with that, and they haven't returned the call yet. Um, I think they're struggling with getting, the same thing that we struggled with, getting ADP to speak to Nemrick, so their books work out.
Appreciate the info. I mean, that, that's what we're looking for. We're just concise. If you did your homework, thank you.
You're very welcome. Any questions? Any, anything that you wanna add?
Yeah, did we, did they speak to, um... Getting time clock machines that are automated and keeping payroll in-house?
Um, Paychecks will do a, a time clock machine. Um, and, and Joe will have to help me, 'cause I don't recall the price, but you have to pay for each time clock. I do believe it's fifty dollars. Was it fifty dollars?
Fifty-five dollars a month.
Okay.
For each month?
And then you pay for each, each time clock. So we have to have one in the town office, one at each of, of the facilities where the, the staff, um, clocks in. And that would just be a timekeeping mechanism.
You would take care of, you, you would just read all that yourself, which you do now anyways with the time. Now, do you get, you get time cards from the DPW, water and sewer, police, or no?
Police.
Police too? Time cards or time?
With everyone except for the police. They do time cards. They have a, they have a time clock to clock in, to clock out. Plus, they hand in a time sheet, as you'll see, where they indicate, I worked three hours for the cemetery. I did, you know, maintenance on the, of a sports building, and maintenance on town hall. The police, um, do not clock in or clock out of the sewer admin, because they're on the road all the time, and they have different grants that they use to pay for some of their, um, payroll. And that all has to be, you know, separated in, in each other.
So maybe, the next step of that, I mean, obviously, that seems, seems cost prohibitive to begin with. Might just hearing what you're saying, um, maybe we upgrade the, the time clocks. If the time clock, are the time clocks, are they functioning the way you want them to, or could they, could they, is there a way to make them better than, I mean, without going to ADP or, or Paycheck or any of those?
Um, for, just from my perspective, I've been here for, what, five years now almost? No, I think that, I mean, the time clock is old-fashioned, right? It's just a, just a punch, but it does what we need it to do. It tells us when people are in and when people are out, so, and that was, you know, that's the ultimate goal.
Hey, I think originally it stemmed from the idea of trying to alleviate, uh, human resources and consolidating all of the, the time cards each week, 'cause it, flipping through them each week, that's a lot of paper to kinda sort through. And so I, my question would be, is it cost-effective in terms of, uh, saving human time to, to go with something that's a little more automated just for the time punches? I think outsourcing payroll is, uh, it's certainly not, uh, not for us, but, uh, kind of freeing up some, um, personnel, which might be something worth considering.
Liz did talk, she didn't mention, but she did, uh, talk to Nemrick about somehow integrating the programs into our program. Um, and it's possible, but it's expensive. Right now, it's not just like click a button and it's there. They actually have to write code and somehow tie these systems together, so when DPW punches in, it actually hits the system, yeah. So, um, we don't wanna do that, 'cause then they'll use it for everything. We'll pay for it, and everybody will get the benefit.
I think if, if, you know, having to do payroll on two weeks, like, every two weeks it gets easier, because I'm getting more and more use of the system. And I think one way to, to cut down on hours spent on payroll is to alleviate, again, all those line items. Because then, they don't, I mean, for both, if they wanna keep track of it in DPW as to what they do, when they do it, and how they do it, that's, that's up to them. But for timekeeping purposes, if the person, um, came in and said, I work from eight to six, Monday through Friday, or Monday through Thursday, I have forty hours a week, and maybe two hours of overtime, um, because whatever was needed, that's a lot easier to, to put into the Nemrick system than it is to put in two hours for cemetery, three hours for summer work, four hours for winter work, however they divide it out. That's where a lot of your time is being used in calculating your payroll.
I think one of the things is that if department heads wanted to keep track of those hours that, that, um, people in their department are using for specific things, they could do that if the board was interested in those numbers. Rather than having it continue to be as part of payroll, which is basically just a system for paying for hours, not, not really an effective way to track those hours, you could shift that to departments to do that. Just use a department log to log in what specific hours certain people are doing or what done today, and manage their own system, and report those hours to you on a quarterly basis. Um, and also, with the electronic systems, two of the things that are a worry is that there has been, even, you can Google it in the news, where some outsized, um, payroll systems have defaulted, and, um, people aren't getting paid. People aren't getting paid in a timely manner. There was glitches in the system, and, and even here in Vermont, there was a case where an outsized payroll system, um, failed. And the, the company was trying to get those hours and that money back. 'Cause once they cycled it for payroll, it, it, the money is leaving you and, and going to them. So I have concerns from, you know, my standpoint with data breaches, efficacy of the system, whether it's really worth the cost at all, and, and I don't think it would really make Liz's job any easier to do that.
Doesn't sound it.
If we have a glitch or an issue with payroll, why just don't Nemrick, can they log on and fix it for us? They are, they have very good support, and they're right in the state of Vermont.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
That was, uh, thank you. That was clear and concise.
Thank you.
Sometimes it's not the case.
Shoney, I just have one question. Years back, in my past experiences, sometimes, when I kept track of time, sometimes it was very critical, and sometimes it wasn't. What, what comes to mind is a natural disaster, where we had to reimburse FEMA and then places. The department heads may wanna keep a log just for that reason. But that's the only reason I can think of that that's really necessary.
I think specific grants need documentation as well. So again, I think that that can be done as a department head as well. But I know especially with the police department, the way that their grants are funded, they have to be accountable of where those hours are used. So they might need a more precise system. Where, whereas some departments that are working, you know, the department heads can keep track of how many hours on highway, how many outdoor, how many summer, and those kind of things. But grant proposals can sometimes require more detail.
We could, we could do that in there, um, very easily. I mean, we have the OP grant, the special services grant, the DUI grant. We just put the hours into that area, so we have account numbers for each of those areas. So we are keeping track. It's not, it's not at all difficult. The chief is very good about saying how many hours each person uses for whatever grant that we have.
Yes?
I've said it before, and I'll say it again.
Sixty twenty, twenty-six?
That's a different rule. Right now, you can't get rid of applying it towards GL codes, because that's where the funding is. That's where the budget is. That's how we do budgeting. You'd have to modify your budget process, which I provided a solution some time ago. And you just, you put all the money in, well, in a couple of spots. You've got water, sewer, and, uh, the O-one account. But you keep those GL codes in there as placekeepers to, to show where the work was done. Okay, now whether the, uh, the, the department heads put it in, or, you know, our account puts it in, you know, that's, that's minutia that has to be figured out. But until you do that kind of thing, you can't do the, the other simplification, because that's where the money is. In, in each of those individual GL codes. That's how we budget. So we have to change the budget.
Well, this is, this is the time to talk about that, obviously, it's budget season. So if, if there was a way to do it that, that is still transparent, it would be nice to make it a little simpler. And that, and, and still, if we can do that and keep, keep track, from the department head's point of view, that they could keep track of where they spent that money, you might be able to...
You kinda have to do that just for the voters.
Yeah, oh, I know, yeah.
For sure.
Yeah.
You kinda have to do that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I agree with you a little bit.
But it's as a, it's just a, uh, it's a record-keeping at that point. It's not a, a budgeting and, and funding and, you know, check writing. I mean, it all comes out, all public works comes out of the O-three or the O-two, and, and then, you know, there's O-one items as well. And you just put the money in those pots. There's gonna be three pots of money. And that's it. And now you can start to simplify. Unfortunately, we can't get away from those three pots of money.
Yeah, I, I think there's, I don't know, I think there would be a way to, to do that and still control. It's an interesting exercise anyways. I mean, it...
And then the eighty-twenty rule comes in, or the, uh, the twenty, the twenty-eight.
Twenty, twenty-eight.
Yeah.
I never get that right.
Yeah, twenty-eight.
I was going twenty-six.
And you're doing two exercises. The first one is easy, the twenty-eight rule. And the second one is just overtime. How much overtime? And that's a discussion that can be had and debated, and, and it simplifies the whole budgeting process, but also simplifies the accounts.
Let's have some more discussions on that.
Very.
In the middle of having budget season. Thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trace, you're up.
I just wanted to tell you what I've been doing, um, and how impressed I am with the way that, um, both Joe and Liz and the office staff are doing. So, um, Joe has thankfully been giving me a lot of time. We've gone over how the budget works. They've all given me an idea of how money comes in, money comes out. Joe and I also went over how the program that they're doing, the building project that they're doing here in the building, went over it line by line, how we keep track of it, how funding ebbs and flows. I've found no discrepancies in any of it. Um, I think he's got a really good, um, plan, and also it's very easily organized so that anybody can use it and look at it. Um, so I wanna say kudos to that. Um, Liz has just been very patient with me. And, 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 and I think, you know, your, your office staff is just really good office staff. You know, I lean too, and both very helpful, you know? Even with my simplest questions, um, I never felt disrespected and I think very supportive of just, you know, we've been going over and combing through everything and how it goes and how it runs. Daily deposits, um, they have to do because of my work schedule, but, um, Joe and I need send those copies of those to me. I go through all of the figures, make sure they match up with what they've gotten, and we do that for every daily, daily, um, deposit slips. So, um, I'm ju, it, it's interesting, believe it or not. It's a change of pace from my regular job, so I really actually enjoyed it. Um, I also met with Sharon and, I can't remember her name, so, the listers.
Tom, Tom Brusso and Tom and Dick.
Yeah, too, and they've been, um, helpful to explaining out the whole assessment process works. Um, I've got a copy of the manual that I have to send going through. Um, we've been a little busy right now, so, um, it's been difficult for me the last few weeks. But I really have to say that everybody has been forthcoming. Um, I talked to the, uh, the people that came to, um, evaluate our books. And the auditors, and they said they have never seen our books look so good. That it hasn't always been that case in the past, and they were very impressed with the job that Liz was doing. I didn't ask for that information. I just said, anything you guys need, can you explain what you're doing? And asked me if I needed any help, and she, they said, no. They said, this is amazing. So I thought, you know, it's, we're, we're so quick to jump on the bandwagon when someone does something wrong. I think it's important to give people kudos when they do something right. So I have to say that, um, the books look good. Ebb and flow of what goes in goes out is, seems to be on target. I still think it's probably a learning curve. But everybody has been very good about answering any questions I have. I've actually been really impressed with, um, what everybody's doing and what they know.
Great.
Questions for the auditor, or for the, excuse me, for the treasurer?
No, just thank you for stepping up and the job you're doing.
Now, one thing I wanted to ask of you guys is that if there's anything that you want information about, any questions that you have, or if there's anything that I can, additionally that I can do, that's required, um, please let me know. And I'll get back to you as soon as I can. So just fire off the, um, Joe has my information and my email. Fire me off a message, or send me, um, a message, and I'll get back to you as soon as I can.
It might be worthwhile to do it like we do with the department heads, but maybe monthly, or every six weeks, or something like that. You know, every third meeting, or fourth meeting, or something like that. You know, which would be every two months. You know, something like that. Just to, just say, here's what's happening, this is... But if there's nothing to report, then it'll be a short.
You'll hear about it.
Yeah, well...
One way or the other.
Yeah.
Good. Any other questions? Well, thanks.
No, thank you for coming in tonight.
See you guys tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thanks for both of you guys.
Thank you.
That was great.
Um, what do we have left? Five minutes for public comment? John?
Something I've been given some considerable thought about for quite a while. And my appointment is up, it's October, on the thirty-first day of October. That will be my last day.
You're gonna resign?
Oh, I'm not. I don't have to resign.
Well, you don't have to resign, but I just signed your, your thing. You made me think of that.
No, I, I haven't signed my local office.
Okay.
What do you mean you're resigning? Well, I've, you know...
No, um... Thought it for an awful long time.
Forty-five years.
How long?
Forty-five.
Forty-five years?
No.
Wanna thank you for forty-five years of lots of time. It's another one of those thankless jobs. But, uh, we really appreciate it.
Yeah. Now I can't find where I signed it, so maybe you're out of luck anyway. So... Well, sorry to see you go, but you have every right to retire. Yeah, I know how you feel.
We really appreciate it.
We really do. Thank you. Well, now we gotta find ourselves a new...
Thank you, John.
Kinda fill it right there. Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
Thank you. That would be my question with our assistant health officer. What's the process, Bob?
It's like, give me like a ton of bricks.
Right, right. I, I, that would be, I figure that's the question. Is there a process that we, we...
We generally, what we generally do is, uh, we generally, um, advertise for any position like that. However, volunteers are hard to come by, so if somebody wanted to step up from assistant to the official, that's probably where we would, that's probably where we would go.
Well, that, that's what I was thinking.
That's just my process.
Well, because something could come up tomorrow, where we're advertising.
John said it'd be on until the thirty-first of October.
Okay.
Yeah. So...
Yeah, we can get the word out.
So, um, obviously, obviously, we will, uh, we will take any and all comers, but, but, I mean, I, I see no reason to reinvent the wheel if, if we've got somebody that's... I don't have that. So, the process will be that we will say we don't like to not advertise just so it's, it's open and transparent and everything, so we'll do that. But I, I, if you're interested, please let us know. You have time to think about it. Any other public comment? Department head reports. Think you got me? Okay, I get to be the, I get to be the police chief for a second. Last two weeks, the, the police department had twenty-six, uh, traffic or municipal violations issued, uh, twenty-five warnings, they dealt with two car crashes. Uh, twenty-six motor sets of civilian fingerprints have, uh, have been done out of our police department. That's at twenty-five dollars a pop. So they're, they're doing great down there. We talked last meeting, or the meeting before, about, uh, a pole-mounted speed sign. Through a highway safety grant, equipment grant, that sign is in. Um, the chief also found, uh, some of those, those signs you put in the middle of the road. This is pedestrian crossing like we used to have downtown, uh, till the semi truck smashed them. He got three more of those, and those will be going back out too. Uh, he says those should arrive any day now. Uh, and then if, if you have the report he, uh, he provided, he provided the revenues, um, so far this, uh, for July and August. Uh, July revenues from the finger, uh, fingerprints was thirteen hundred eighty dollars. Total for that month was twenty-eight thousand dollars in revenue.
Uh, total for that month was twenty-eight thousand dollars in revenue. Uh, August, um, again, fingerprints were two thousand, almost twenty-one hundred dollars just in fingerprinting. Um, with a, with the total in August of fifty-six, five thousand six hundred sixty-two dollars in, in revenue from the police. They're, they're gonna rack it up a couple bucks.
What is the Liddell Brothers?
That's a construction company.
Oh, okay, that's the, the flagging and stuff.
That's where your part-time officer's working sixty-two hours a week. Or a month, or for two weeks. So we're over our thirty hours a week.
And that's what I got for the police. Uh, highway, um, the guys were cracked ceiling last week. They had the, they had that machine for two weeks. Um, the machine did start to act up a little bit, uh, so they, they returned it a little bit early. The company's gonna reimburse us for, for days that we didn't use it. They did get most done, most things done that they wanted to get done. And they said it went really well. Uh, what I've seen, I'm by no means a, uh, crack seal expert, um, but from what I saw, I thought it looked pretty good. Uh, hydrant flushing did start yesterday, last night on the nineteenth. Um, so you see the guys out, they were out last night, they'll be out tonight, and then maybe one more night depending on what they can get done.
To do what?
Hydrant flushing. Uh, they're taking delivery of their gravel now, uh, and they're waiting for their sand, but that should be coming in presently. Uh, and they're gonna start some, they're starting, uh, uh, they're gonna complete the work, the M, M R G P grant work up on Marha Road. This is at the state-funded, uh, uh, projects to help with our water, with the drainage on the side of the roads, to help control that. Uh, and they're starting, so it's that time of year again, they're starting their maintenance on the equipment. Those, those trucks will be out, they'll be, uh, they'll be oiled. Equipment will be greased up, the, the plows, they'll, they'll get those working, in working order, getting ready for, uh, winter. And we're still waiting on information, we're still, still waiting on dates from Pike. So somehow we managed to schedule our paving on the same days that it rained this summer.
Well, both of them. I think it's time next year that we put a, uh, amount, they're supposed to have this done by first September. And that's the way it's always been, 'cause we didn't want it done after that. From now, I think we should put a, a charge, a daily charge when they don't come in here. They did, they're doing the same thing to us every year. Every year they do it.
I know that the contract does have a, a drop dead date of September fifteenth.
Well, that's why we're past that.
We are. Um, we're gonna see if they say if the weather holds, I'd like to get, I'd like to get furnace paved. It's been, what, two or three years now? If it's too cold, it's just too cold, we can't do it.
You're not gonna leave these side streets the way they are right now. You better get them in here to pave.
We keep asking, Jay. I, I can't, I can't drive a truck here myself.
Well, I'm sorry, but these guys, they do this to us every year. Last year we didn't get any paving done because they fooled around and fooled around and fooled around. And our money's just as good as the state of Remont's or anybody else's. And I think we should put a five hundred dollar a day, five hundred dollar a day penalty on them.
I wonder if they'll take the contract if they see that.
Well, there's other payers out there. Pet comes in here every day. Wilk's here every day.
A lot of, a lot of people do do that, put a fine.
The state does. I think the state's a thousand dollars a day.
They're, they're paying twenty-five hundred dollar a day fine for the signs out on the main highway.
Yeah.
Been doing that all summer.
But, I mean, it's not unreasonable.
Well, but they do it to us every year. When Wilk comes in and does the paving, they're in and out.
'Cause it, it does become a point in the fall where the pavement's not gonna hold up as well.
Yep.
You know?
Uh, for the water department.
Before we leave that one right there, Scotch Hill, those, those potholes from, from the Roberts Fire Bond are getting deeper and deeper. Uh, there needs to be some patching. John, I know we're not gonna get, oh, but that.
That's where it was supposed to be shamed.
It's supposed to be shamed with this, when they come in and do.
When they come in, well, I, I didn't see it in the thing that it was gonna be shimmed up. I have, if it's shimmed, fine, but.
It's supposed to be.
Those, those potholes are, are opening up pretty good at the upper end again.
See them today.
We, we need to.
Get one there.
Take care of that, yeah.
We could touch base with the paving company and see if they got any idea now when they're coming.
Aaron's been in contact.
Has he?
Yeah, weekly, every couple of days, seeing what's going on. Uh, there's so much work that, that they just, if they're not in the area, they just don't show up. And that's just what it is.
Then you shouldn't take the contract.
Right, if there's a performance piece for the contract, what? They should look to the contract.
Uh, so for the water department, the, uh, we're still, we're in the process of getting those tanks replaced, but the guys, they did get a, a couple totes of the, uh, alum and, and the caustic soda. Those are sitting down there. Um, I guess not that it's a huge deal, but, um, we're just waiting for the tanks to be demoed and, and installed. I think they said, what, twelve weeks for that? So, uh, and they replaced two hydrants. In my roundup, I said three, but they, uh, they replaced two hydrants, uh, last week, so that's good news. They're trying to pick away at these hydrants, 'cause you know, the, the, if something breaks, it's like, we'll get it next summer and then next summer comes and goes. So we did manage to get our hydrants back up and running. Uh, sewer department, the, the new plant, they say is running very well. Um, we're getting, uh, dates for the annual sewer flushing, so we'll be updating the board on that. And we're waiting for dates for the, the camera work that the board approved. So we'll, we'll let you know when that's gonna happen as well.
Did it, the camera work is gonna be on Capitol Hill, correct, down through?
No, it was gonna be down here, like Prospect, Main Street, River Street.
Okay. I thought it was, I thought you said something about Capitol Hill because it hadn't been, that hadn't been checked in a long time. I thought, I could've misunderstood him.
I recall that.
Wasn't there something on Capitol Hill?
I believe, I believe what he asked was if you get so much for a certain, whatever money we, we okay. If he could do more, he would like to do up there.
Okay. I knew there was something about Capitol Hill, I just wasn't sure exactly. That's not a problem. If he's got extra money there, do it.
Yeah. What we know will help.
Those scarrils, but it'll help.
Uh, and from the manager's office, uh, I did talk to the state about, uh, trailer park backwater and taxes. They are gonna pay backwater and taxes.
They are?
They are. At least the next water bill will be paid. Um, taxes, there's a caveat on that. Um, they can give, uh, the administrators the money for back, back rent, back lot rent. That does not guarantee that the money will make its way here. They can't force her to pay her back taxes, her back taxes.
But we can.
Yeah, we can. Well, we can sell the property.
No, we can't force her to pay.
We, right, so. We can't force her to pay, but we can, yep, we can change the situation.
So they pay her and, and, uh, hopefully she pays us.
Yes.
Now, did she, the last infusion of money, did she pay up the money that she said she was going to?
Yes, the, all of the water money showed up from the last, all of the water arrears are paid. So there's a current bill that's there now. That money is gonna show up, which will pay current bill off, um, and then the taxes, so. But that program's ending.
That's what I was gonna ask you about, that.
Yeah, that program's coming to an end.
The program is ending or their involvement here is ending?
The program, they're out of money. They, they blew through all of that money. It's, that seventy percent, they'll pay seventy percent in through October, and then in December it's slated to just completely go away.
After December bill? After, or are they gonna pay the, until the first of the year?
There won't be another water bill or taxes paid. It's not gonna hit, oh, November tenth is that tax bill? You might get, you might get one more tax bill. Let me backtrack on that. You might get one more tax bill.
But they haven't paid the previous one.
Not yet. But they said they would, so we'll see. It's a situation. It's, I've, I've reached out again to the, the nonprofit and I've reached out to the state again. And it's, you know, 'cause I don't think the board, and I'm, I'm just speculating, but I don't think the board, and I certainly know I, don't wanna keep going around and around and around with shutting off water and tax sales. It costs us too much time and money to deal with this. Um, but their only solutions that are coming are coming from this table. And that's just to sell and turn off, sell the property and turn off the water. Everybody else has nothing. Uh, you know, so, so on that bit of joy, um, solar project up off of, uh, Munger Road, off the Sheldon property, um, they're still plugging away. Uh, what they're planning, uh, the company V H B, I think it is, um, they're gonna take another look at the land on the airport road that's adjacent to Munger Road. Um, I walked up with their hydrologist last week. Um, and he, based on the plants growing there, uh, he does not think that the wetland extends out as far as, uh, maybe the first person thought. So they're gonna reassess that and, and stop clear. So they're gonna reassess that for us.
It would be nice to have some, some arguments.
Yeah.
One way or the other, so we can go to the state and say, I, I, we missed an opportunity a long time ago, that's, that's the problem.
Oh, Liz is gone. She knows more about it than I do, but we did update our NEMRIT program to do our, um, our billing, like our transfer station billing. Um, we have a loan out there through that grant, through the revolving loan program. That'll be in this billing, so we updated that program, uh, to kinda help us to, to get rid of the, all the people, people time and automate some of our processes. Uh, trailer park tax sale, uh, this was a separate bullet point, but I did put that on hold. We have sixty day, the state's making us send out notices because of the V HAP program. Um, and it requires sixty day notice, so it's a lot of time and effort to put something up for tax sale if it's not gonna be sold anyway. So I put that on pause at least for two months, um, until we find out what's going on. Uh, I did though start other tax sale properties. I've started, I got five, five si- five properties that I'm gonna put up for tax sale. Um, that is also a sixty day window, but that gives me enough time to pull five properties together and get those ready for sale, assuming the people don't pay their back taxes.
Let me ask you a question. Um, would it be worthwhile as soon as there's gonna be? It's really, we're, we're not worried about the tenants as much as we are the owner.
Correct. For the trailer park?
For the taxes. I, so they're gonna get the money, they pay it to the owner, and the owner can or does or does not pay us.
For the trailer park?
For the trailer park.
The money's going right to the owner.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So whether it gets here or not is a different story.
Is it the owner or the manager?
Manager.
Okay, 'cause there isn't a owner there.
There is no, he's dead.
Yeah, okay, all right. Sorry.
Oh, lights in the park, we got a, we got some response from lights in the park and the parking ride project. We got a response back from the state on the drawings. Um, they gave their comments, we'll make those cor- when I say we, I mean our contractor. Um, he'll make those, uh, corrections and resubmit for final drawings. Uh, we are preparing for the December bid, so that project is moving, uh, moving forward. Construction is still anticipated in spring of twenty-three. Not a lot, nothing else really moving. Um, the revolving loan fund, which we did give out that, we gave out a loan a year ago, uh, that first payment is due November first. So once that money comes back to us, we'll be able then again to loan it out to our Fairhaven businesses, so. I really like that program. And as the treasurer, and I think, I don't know if the accountant mentioned it, but we're still working through the audit. We are on track for an October, October completion right now. Uh, I'm waiting to hear back about the single audit and see how long that's gonna take. And that's what I have for you.
I got one question. On that, on the lights in the park, is, so we're anticipating a start date of spring twenty-three. Is there any indication on how long a contract is, is gonna be? And do they, do we have some, somewhat of an idea about completion date?
Uh, not yet. We don't have the bids, I mean, we don't have the construction bids in yet. Um, from what I was told, the lights, the lights themselves will be easy in the park. Um, the parking lot will be more of a, more of a lift, so, but I don't, I don't have a timeframe now.
Is, is that as one contract or are they gonna do the park separate?
There are two, so there are two separate programs, but we've kinda mushed them together to, so everything, we're hoping everything goes as one contract. Um, there's always a possibility somebody.
Is there a possibility of us trying to, to push the idea of having the park lights done first?
Yes.
That would make sense.
'Cause that would, that would be a lot better for the concerts and stuff like that.
Yeah, if they're gonna start in the spring, it'll be done before the concerts start.
Well.
We hope.
We would.
If it's like our elevator, it probably never will be, but.
That would just be nice, you know? Uh, somewhat, some, somewhere near completion by, by July one.
Yeah, we did kinda promise the people.
Well, we, we, we only told them what we've been hearing. Didn't promise them, we only told them what we've been hearing. And that's the same thing we just heard now.
But on that same line, Joe, when we say that the, put it out to bids in December, the reason we're not putting it out to bid right now is we don't have the drawings done. Is that correct?
Final approval.
Final approval on the drawings.
From the state, yeah. I, uh, I tried to push them along.
Otherwise I'd say put the bid out right now.
Yeah, I, I tried to push them harder to get this, get at least the lights in the park done sooner. Um, I got hard pushback from the state saying, well, you get better bids in December, so you should just wait. So they were not amenable to moving these timeframes at all.
If I'm taking a bid, I'm setting up my work, I think you're July one and highly doubtful that if you wait till December to put a bid out, that you'll get anyone to do anything before the end of the summer. Or, that's my concern with pushing it out. And I'm saying, if you've got what you need, go, get your bids.
At least the lights.
Get, get your bids and, and go. Anything that we can do to move that forward, and one of them is if we can put it out to bid sooner than December. I respect what they're, what, what they're saying, but quite frankly, the state has no sense of urgency. And if we didn't have lights in there until twenty-twenty-five, they'd be just as happy. So I'm not, I don't think we, we go on their timetable. We should work, we have nine concerts. One will be in the dark if we don't get some lights in there.
It's their money too, so mostly, they will, they will hold, they will push back, but.
But which, push back against that?
Yeah, the, the thing that I would, that we, we can help with is check on the lights that we are actually gonna buy. And just see what their, what the, what the delivery time on those are. 'Cause that could be troublesome.
Could very well not be able to get them for a year, a year or two.
It's, supply chains are all over and.
I'd, I'd caution.
Although I know a company that builds those kinda lights out very close to here.
But that would be awful nice to have.
Yeah, but.
Lights.
They're, they're expensive. They don't pay their help a lot, but they charge a lot. Anyway, anything else?
Those are good.
Any other questions for Joe? Moving along. Salt Shed?
Yeah, so, so, I, guys, I really have nothing good to say about this project. With the way the costs are now, there's, there's really no way to get this done for the, the money that we budgeted. I did, so I was told that, I've been having a hard time finding the Amish. Um, I was told if I go down.
You didn't get my paper I left on your desk?
No.
With a map?
Down here.
Yeah, there's one down here on Gulf Road, then you go down to White Hall and.
That's what I drove down there and looked, I couldn't find what you.
By the Gulf, on the Gulf Road?
Uh, whatever it is, I banged down here and banged a left, whatever that is.
Just before you get to the propane tanks there, it's on the left-hand side.
I went right past it. I, I creeped up on everybody's house.
It sits back, it's, the sawmill and stuff sits back, back out.
Okay, I, if the, I can try one more time and run out there? I was coming today to recommend to just scuttle this project.
Well, as far as, like I, I read in your, your report there, how the state wants us to. Well, as far as, like I, I read in your, your report there, how the state wants us to go for another bid. Or for more, no, because they've cut our bill in half now, you know?
Double the price.
And double the price, triple the price. I say, personally, I say we put it on hold or whatever, scratch it or send their money back or whatever. I mean, if you wanna check with the Amish first, but you know, we don't know what, we don't know what the deal is with insurance.
That was a concern somebody brought to me was, you know, something happened, what happens?
Yeah, they do good work, don't get me wrong, but I mean, I would just be concerned about the liability factor.
I don't believe they have any insurance, I mean honestly.
Yeah, so, you know, we might not be able to use, we might not be able to use grant money for that anyways.
Right.
I mean, you know, I mean, I'm sure if, something like that comes with, with all the stipulations and what you have to have for insurance. All that, so.
Well, we wouldn't, we certainly wouldn't be able to use the Amish to build it with state money. So to, to send the state money back though, I need the board to vote to return that cash.
Make the motion.
I'll make a motion that we scratched to salt shed and send them, send the money back.
I'll second that.
Is there a liability to us from that, there is, isn't there?
They're, he's trying, they tried to scare you, they say, you know, you could owe fifteen thousand dollars. So there is a possibility of us having to refund fifteen K.
We haven't used it, have we?
We haven't used anything from that, no.
So why would, why would we have to be paying fifteen thousand if we didn't use any of it?
It's time that they had into it, it would be the federal government requiring us to pay for it.
Yeah, but make sure you inform, the reason why we're still dealing with this is because of the state, not because of us. So maybe they owe us fifteen thousand for the amount of time that.
More than, more than that, probably.
Yeah, but you know, I mean, come on.
Well, that was my only question, Ed. Any other questions?
Do you need that in a minute?
I'll send you the DMO.
Oh, alright, okay.
I don't recall how much it was.
Everybody understand what we're doing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Listen. All those opposed?
Well, I, I've got a question. If we do this, where are we, where are we setting on our building movement process?
I don't know that it changes anything, I mean, it's just that we, the worst case scenario is we'd have a salt pile like we have now.
Right.
You know, covered with tires.
We still use the building down there.
Yeah.
Where no, nowhere's off.
I mean, they are still using the building.
Yeah, but I mean, if we try to get everything up there away from the river, it doesn't change anything. It just means that we don't have a building around it, or.
See, I have a problem with putting a saw barn up there and nothing else.
Right.
If, if we go up to the airport, it's gotta all happen at the same time.
Same time.
They gotta get it done, get up, moved up there and start operations. Because it's just not gonna work any other way.
Too much running. I know, but, I get it. So the wetland designation is good for five years. If the board is, basically, my experience has been that we set up plans and then those plans fall apart usually about year two, right? If we're serious about moving, we really could start planning now, get to year five, and then when that wetland designation expires, get somebody that knows what they're talking about and get that declared not wilding. But it would require five years worth of commitment. And I, you know, do we have the wherewithal to wait five years and put away money and do bond votes?
Where they're talking about the town barn isn't wetland anymore.
Two discussions, let's get this vote over.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
So there's, there was one, at least one, two, three affirmative and then get.
How much money is it that we would be returning? I was declared this, I wanna say it was a hundred and ninety thousand, but don't, don't quote me on that number.
Is there any timeframe in which we can sit on it in case something falls into our lap?
I mean, we can constant, we can sit on it for another year, but are, are they gonna ask us to pay more than, you know, for managing that product, more managing it without movement? And we've already sat on it for what, three years? We've asked for extensions at least once.
Let me do it over again, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Genius.
Alright, now if we wanna talk about that some more, we can, but. If not, traffic ordinance.
So the tra- I don't have the language for the traffic ordinance. I had Aaron and Jim look into the, there's, there's specific language that needs to go on these signs, on signs, I forget what the M. I forget, the, the MTDC or something. So I wanted to make sure I had the actual sign language available before I changed the ordinance. So that way I don't have to do this two or three times, so I'm still waiting on sign languages to.
We will table that discussion.
Yeah.
For the traffic ordinance, one thing that I was, I've been hyper vigilant around, uh, traffic since we've been discussing it. How do folks feel about having an ordinance against engine braking within city limits? It's been awful loud.
I don't think you can, you can put signs up suggesting that they don't use them. I don't believe, I don't believe in put ordinance to ban them.
Year ago, year ago, we had this discussion, we had a discussion with the last board and we couldn't.
They have to have that as an option. Engine brakes are a safety feature on trucks, very much so.
But I don't think we ever got our signs up, did we?
There's one up on.
Bulger Road.
Bulger Road. Yeah, we put one up there when the, when the, just a suggestion.
It really should be bigger than this.
Yeah, that was, that was for the end, correct?
Yeah.
Should be on the same line, when I look, even though we couldn't use the word jake brakes.
You can't use jake brake.
Like they do over as you're going into White Hall, there's this big sign, no, no jake brakes.
You can't use, because that's a company's name.
Right.
It has to be, you have to put on a sign, engine brake.
Engine brakes.
Well, eh, eh, the suggestion isn't, that isn't a bad idea, we, you know, we can always just.
They, cause they do, they come down twenty-two and it's unbelievable.
Oh, yeah, that's Washington Street, just so loud.
So, I mean, but put a sign up that they can see, you know what I'm saying? Cause I think we talked about one there, up here, Scotch Hill, Capitol Hill. I believe we talked about five signs. I believe that's what it was.
Between Scotch Hill, Washington.
Capitol Hill.
South Capitol Hill. South Main Street. I don't know about, I don't know how much truck comes in on Prospect.
Right.
I mean, I think most of it's on twenty-two in, in Washington.
I don't think there's an issue on a Prospect street.
I don't think it's a, I don't think you hear.
But that doesn't have to be in the ordinance or shouldn't be in the ordinance, that would just be.
You can put the, you can put the sign up, but I have an ordinance, because it's, I mean, it's not like you're putting, you're gonna get fined if you don't, you know, because it's, you can't tell them not to.
Okay. Property sale discussion, business.
Last meeting, the meeting before, the board had talked about reviewing town properties and potentially selling some of those properties. I went through the list, I went through the listed properties, printed up some maps and the property cards for the properties that I think you could sell. Properties like Town Hall and pump stations, I didn't put it in the packets because you probably don't wanna sell those.
Can't sell them. Well, price is great. Um, some of these I kinda needed to know exactly where they were, like this one.
I think the only one that I saw that I wouldn't consider putting it out, this is Ball Park on, on Academy Street.
Yeah, I was thinking of that one as well.
That's really about the only one, I mean, like they all let property, I don't know, I mean, that's, we had a person at one time that was looking at it, remember? Or he was gonna put some kind of a shop or something down there.
I mean, pretty limited of what you could do there anyway, aren't you?
Well, you gotta build it on the side hill, I mean, that's the sad part.
And you gotta dig into whatever's buried in there.
You got the river right there.
Run off in the river right there, I'm surprised that they'll get any permitting whatsoever.
But you could, I mean, it could still be put off.
When you, can I go back to when you were saying the, I agree with you, the ballpark on Academy, we can't touch. The other lot behind it was in this packet also?
That was given to the town.
Right, do we, do we?
Are you gonna get to it?
I think it's, isn't, isn't that?
No, no, I'm, I'm not saying we sell it, I'm saying, well, last time, I'm just remembering when we tried to put a dog park up there and folks came in and there was quite a bit of discussion about, it's their playground for smaller kids at that end and the potential use for that back lot as well, so I just.
There is a set of swings out in that back lot and a couple little things for the kids to play.
It wouldn't be a bad idea to investigate trying to set something up. There used to be a nice little park there.
There used to be a slate out there and everything else.
You know, it wouldn't be bad to have something for the kids on the south side to run to, you know, have to cross streets to get to a. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna sell that one either.
Mrs. Poppen gave that to the town when she sold the property out up there.
This is, just to keep in the back of our minds when we're talking, maintenance for recreation areas and everything, well, there's an area that we.
They mow it all the time, town takes care of it all the time. There's a bunch of trees that could come down up there. And open it up a little bit, I mean, for, you could even put it, you know, that wouldn't be a bad place to put like picnic tables and stuff. Something for the people just to use, you know?
Yeah, just.
Yeah, you could make that pretty simple and make it a little bit of a destination for people.
I'd like to see them go back using the ballpark more, but.
Right, I miss not seeing.
Had the problem with Eagles Club, so it was.
Has there been a problem with parking there, correct?
Not having parking.
See, the Eagles Club was claiming parking lot that wasn't theirs. If you remember that big old, the big tree that was parked, that was at the corner of the Eagles Club, that was their line. Anything, when you pull into the upper parking lot by the ballpark, they don't own anything this side of the parking lot or this side of that driveway, where that parking lot is and they use.
So that's all town.
That's towns, because when Dicky Reed was here, we put the parking lot in there. And the squabble they had with the baseball, there was somebody parked in the handicap and he went out asking to move and he wouldn't move, that's where the big controversy started.
So this doesn't make a lot of sense to me. The Eagles Club is the Eagles Club, I understand that, but, but they tell me, a lot of, a lot of the neighbors that told me down there that if they pull in there and park, they get chased out of there. And if you're telling me it's town property for them to park on, the Eagles shouldn't be chasing them out.
I, I agree.
You know?
Let's see if I can find them.
This is the tail wagging the dog here, you know what I'm saying?
Agreed.
But if you go down, like I said, like where that stump is, it goes right straight down through. And because if you, well, on that back lot where the, the, Mrs. Poppen gave to town, you can see where it's broke off right, and it's right straight down across that, that stump.
And I, I see the Eagles Club put their fence in, I think they're, so, yeah, next thing, next thing you're gonna see is if we start pushing, probably parking, here's a fence coming right up the other side, the Eagles Club is nice and fenced in. But that, that kinda defeats the purpose of the community.
But everybody, you know, one hand washes the other.
That's correct. I agree with that, Jay, you know, but that's, but that's what has to happen.
Yep.
You know, the Eagles Club has to work with the town.
Uh, and maybe it's time just to talk to those guys and say.
Yeah, before we, before we.
Start a war, but.
Yeah, we don't wanna start a war, we just wanna let them know, I mean, you're using a parking lot every day.
They use it every day, we wanna use it once in a while.
Yeah, yeah, so I don't think it's a big deal.
Right, okay, so, there was, in that packet, there was this thing called a Herrick Lot. Does anyone know what that Herrick Lot is?
That's what I was gonna ask the same question.
I, I looked at it and I'm.
That's up past the, where is, I mean, I don't even know.
Which one was that on?
That was zero four, zero one, one seven.
It's just seventeen right here.
Okay, yeah, I was.
It's across from the swamp. So it's up in, it's up by Inman Pond.
Thank you.
It's three acres.
Is that where our part of the watershed, where we do our logging?
No, so that's, that's Inman Pond right there, the one that goes straight up.
Okay.
The, the water plant is still further up here.
Further up, okay.
There's two lots there, seventeen and then that fifteen, the one that kinda touches the waters.
This is fifteen, right? These two, these two go something like this. Right across each other.
There you go.
And so what they really, even though we say Inman Pond, it's, it's the marsh, Reed's Marsh.
Yeah, that's the marsh right there, it's Inman Pond Road, excuse me.
Inman Pond Road, but that's, these, these are properties that are up at Inman Pond, they're back by the marsh.
This is Inman Pond Road.
This is Inman Pond right here.
And that must be where the marsh comes in, right here.
Yeah, where it's the big shirt, yeah, that makes sense.
So you look at that and you're talking.
Where's this one? Oh, this is also Inman Pond.
Yeah, and this is the other one, this fifteen.
Two and a half acres.
There's three, between the two.
And one, and three and the other, and they look to be right across the road from each other. Cause they're seventeen, they're seventeen, fifteen, right there, with just the road in the middle of them. So on that one, if you're just looking for what I, I didn't have any problem with putting them on the tax rules.
I think we're losing money, guys. It doesn't seem like much each per year, but you, you take this over a long period of time, you're talking a few dollars in tax money.
It's certainly worth advertising, see if anybody's interested. To my, I mean, except for the one down at the Eagle.
Is that still class three road or is it on class, most of the, is it on class four road?
That might be a class four, that might even be private road, I don't know if we made.
Or pri- I mean, when you would go and research that, to your point of, can you sell it? And then the other one, if you're selling, if the thought is someone who might build a house or whatever there, if it's on road that's not plowed or maintained by.
I thought that was the reason why Joe asked, was gonna look over this and find out what could be sold and what couldn't be sold.
Uh, so these are the ones that have potential to be sold. Doing a lot of, doing deed research, digging through, digging through deeds is very, very time consuming. And I didn't wanna dig through deeds that we weren't gonna sell.
Right.
So I'm, if the board chooses to research these, I'll research and bring back a yes or no.
Because I, I just, as long as this, all this up roaming Inman Pond, that it's not into our, where we do our logging.
No.
I wanna make sure that's, because that is an income.
That's this one here.
You know, that is our income for, you know, every ten, fifteen years, we get some money out of it.
Right.
And we wanna protect our watershed as much as possible. But the rest of them, you know? Other than, other than Academy Street.
That's what I think your goal is too.
I say, I say try it. What do you got to lose?
Right, the Airport Road one, right behind the Kennels?
The only one, I thought about that Airport Road one too, that may, we might wanna hold on to that just because with the solar project, there, that may be, they may need a little land, or they may need something that we could, that we could, uh, that may be helpful to them, or, or maybe advantageous to sell at that point.
Helping Tyson to put there.
And the property off in River Street. Is that wetland up there?
It's lowland.
Lowland, that's all, it's not wetland.
I've never been out in there.
Next to the railroad, that lot. I would think that's all wet, Jay, yeah. I haven't been out.
Even though that railroad, even though the railroad is between us and the river.
No.
We're on the other side, we're on the other side.
Okay, so we're, we're between the railroad and the river.
Right, okay.
There used to be our old skating rink there.
That's where, isn't that where the, Vermont Structure used to dump all the water to?
Uh, that's on the other side.
It's on the other side, okay. So this borders where Jack Semin owns.
That's the other side of the river.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the little, the little blue dot there, Jay? That's DPW's yard. That's the DPW yard, and then that's across the river.
Where's the train tracks go?
Very, very.
Yeah, okay.
Rip just showed them. But you might have somebody that's into hunting and fishing and that might wanna purchase it, you know, and it's just, it's still worth putting it up.
Yeah, that guy from Australia's dad is. Cause you'd have to do a little of that.
I just think whatever we can get out of it's better than nothing.
Yeah, because they're gonna be paying taxes on it, no matter what they do with property.
So, take three, take three out of it and investigate the other one. Take the Academy Street.
Academy, the two parcels on Acad, on South Side on Academy Street, take those out of the packet.
Yeah, and the wood lot.
And the north, and we don't want to mess with the two hundred and sixty-six acres in the North Woods. That's watershed, we can get money from, we don't wanna be selling that, right?
And we'll see when you get some sort of a.
I'll do some deed research for next, uh, next meeting.
Yep, is there some log management up on that property?
Yeah, um, young, uh, he, um.
Standard.
Standard does it.
He does it?
Yeah, the boy.
Young Phil.
Young Phil.
He does it for the town?
Yeah, he goes up and marks everything before they go in there, he goes and keeps eye on it.
He'll come once, or once every year, once every other year, and say you're due for this lot and that lot to be, to be cut.
Okay.
He does, he keeps pretty close tabs on it. He's been, always been pretty good with those.
He's not, I don't know if he's the tree warden or not. Oh, right, oh my God, yeah, that's right. That's right, you're right, actually, forgot, no.
So we may need to reach, it may require us to recharge it.
Hands, hands or something like that, I know.
Maybe, maybe we oughta get in touch with him. And even have him come in for fifteen years.
Yeah, we haven't seen him in a while, so.
Just see if he's still been going up there and checking, or, or what's going on.
Cause we may have.
Hanfield, Hanfield, something, yeah, I, I don't know, I had his mother, I had his grandmother for music teacher.
Well, I think it should be checked on, for sure.
I think that should be.
He was, he was doing a pretty good job now that you mention it, so.
Yeah, Phil, Phil couldn't do it anymore.
Yep. Um, cemetery deeds?
Uh, one deed.
Cemetery deed.
Okay, and what this is, are you gonna, you gonna give the background, or do you want me to, to stumble over it?
I, I can give a little background.
Okay.
Um, so the, the one Earl Corey, I think his name was, Earl Corey is, has passed. Um, and he is in Lot one forty-four right now, Lot one forty-four, Section eleven. Um, I'm, I don't have the whole backstory, but what the family wants to do is trade the town their current lot, one forty-nine, and we give them one forty-four, which the guy's there already. So we're just swapping, we're just swapping lots.
So.
What's the big?
There's not, I just, it's just weird.
Just need to.
Well, I, I'll make a motion and we'll do that.
Approve the transfer of Lot one forty-nine, Section eleven, owned by Mr. Earl Corey, deceased. And Sally, Sally Corey back to the town of Fairhaven. And then Fairhaven to transfer Lot one forty-four, Section eleven, to Mr. Earl Corey, deceased, and Sally Corey. I'll second it.
You get all that scarring?
See you, Wilma.
He was just buried there this summer.
Yeah.
He passed away in the spring.
We were there.
All those are buried?
Aye.
Those are posted?
You sign here and everyone else will listen.
I'm getting used to this, man. Squeeze yourself in. Okay, um, the Backflow Prevention Ordinance, which seems to me to be incredibly.
You got, you got through all of it, right?
No, I did not, I, I looked at that and went, what the hell did we do that for?
So I did ask Aaron and the Water Department to review this, cause I figured it's kinda dense and technical. They said it still fits our needs and they didn't see any glaring problems with it. We haven't had any problems with the Backflow Protection Policy. But again, this is like the last one, it was just next on the list, so.
Policy or ordinance?
It's a.
They call it a policy.
They call, it's a policy.
I thought that same thing, it seemed like an ordinance, doesn't it?
Well, I, I thought someone said it was an ordinance, and then the policy is two different things.
Yeah, no, it says policy, and if I said ordinance, I was wrong, but, uh, it's, um.
It's lengthy.
It's, it's fifteen pages or sixteen pages.
Yeah, and a lot of it, a lot of it repeated itself four hundred times.
Yeah.
I read the whole thing.
It's, it's like, I mean, it seems to me like the, the thing should say, you gotta have a backflow protection on your, and, and call it even. But I'm, I'm sure that when somebody put this together, they, they made it.
As long as, as it meets the current require, if there's some state requirement or whatever as well.
Town to put a backflow preventer at the meter? Or, or is this at the shut off? Does anybody know?
Says in the policy, it's supposed to be prior to the me, meter, doesn't it? That's what I read it, and so I'm saying, there's supposed to be a backflow, if you've got the meter in your house, there should be a.
Has anybody got one in their house?
Not that I know of.
Not that I know of.
Cause I know about five or six places here in town that there's no backflow preventer in there.
I think it must be new. Like I said, I get through this thing.
There's probably the gram.
No installations?
Maybe new installations and, and, you know.
Any, any new construction requires this, if we see it, if we're working on something that's in that area, we will require a backflow preventer. This is why we were having trouble with the airport, with the back, with backflow coming into our system. But I think they have.
Any, any resident that has a leak, that you're worried about backflow, they're gonna take care of it because of the fact it's gonna cost them money if they don't.
They pay for it coming in.
It's not like up there, I mean, where they didn't care, you know? But I think anybody with new construction, they can put one in, for sure, you know?
We'll go with what we have, call it even and not, not worry about it.
I make a motion, we, uh, we, uh, keep it as is.
Second that, anybody?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Consider it bureaucratically short.
Yeah, it is bureaucratically short.
You have something you would like signature or something?
Clear and concise, yes, no.
So all we have, all they're gonna do with this policy right here, they're just gonna put that it was motioned by this board to leave as is.
Nothing is changed.
It's not gonna be revised, it's not gonna be, in the minutes of the meeting should cover it, correct? Or do we have, or are you gonna put another paper in front of it?
You have, you have one coming around for signatures.
Oh, it's coming around, well, excuse me.
Coming around for signatures right now.
You're, you're a jump ahead of me.
Okay, um.
There, how about that?
Now, here's one, it goes right after my heart here, banners in the park. We could read the whole thing in about two seconds. Once again, this signpost policy.
I did have a couple questions on that one.
Go ahead.
Um, I noticed that, that, I know what the policy says, but I noticed, uh, that the banner that we had, the uh, street market banner, and then we had the Apple Fest banner that was practically on the ground. I thought it looked like not very good. Uh, that I would, as long as we're looking at the policy, only one banner at a time up on the post.
If you read this policy, or whatever it is, if it's ordinance or policy, the Friday night thing that's, with the banner that was up there, it's supposed to be after, what, it's only supposed to be after for two weeks? Isn't that what it says in it? Well, it's been there since, since May.
And, well, that's the, the other thing, when I looked at the policy, another question was, uh, the wording that says, uh, when you remove it.
Forty-eight hours after the call.
And I saw the forty-eight hours, and I'm saying, okay, uh, when you're looking at these, it's an opportunity to have discussions, I just wanted to have discussions, saying of, wouldn't we consider, uh, immediately after the event? We, we get to where, when you put stuff, banners like that up. Anytime, they, they just become part of the scenery and you don't even notice them. You need to have banners, if, marketing wise, I'm gonna, that banner, when you put it up, is something special, that's why, you put it up, you take it down.
Only one that takes care of that is concerts in the park, because when the concerts are over with, the sign is gone. They leave it up for a little while thanking people for, you know, for coming, and even like the one with the flags. You know, the, the Knights, Knights of Columbus put it up, right? Where they put the flag, that's gone, I mean, that, that's there until October first, and then it's gone. And, and I think that's what should happen with all these, I mean, and I think, personally, you should add in to these things campaign signs in the whole nine yards, because they stay up here forever. Garage sale signs, people just forget about them, they stack them to a tree and forget them.
Yeah, but, but I mean, I look at this one here, and it, and it's a very specific policy, the banners on the signposts, of which we have two. One in, in front of the town office, and one on the side.
How many of them come in here to see you to get permission to put signs up?
Uh, so the, the, both, so both banners that were up, the Farmer's Market and the Friday Market, they both called the nest. Um, and we've been, we say we, I, I've been lax in requesting people to take them down after two weeks. For example, like the Friday Market, that goes on all summer.
It's here all summer.
So, um, what I have asked though is if, um, somebody else wants to put a sign up, please take your sign down.
Yeah, cause I have to agree with what.
And that's not always followed, I just get a lot of pushback saying that, why do I have to do that? Cause I asked you to, I don't know.
Well, and that's why I was just looking at the policy to say, uh, when it, uh, whether it says that the banner, uh, can be displayed no longer than two weeks, uh, for two weeks, I'm going, okay, yeah. How's that work? I think it was nice to put something in here, but now that we've got experience since two thousand thirteen, how's it work? And what do we wanna, is there anything, do we wanna tweak it? That's the reason we're looking at these policies.
Here's, here's my thoughts. The Farmer's Market's here all summer long. So they really oughta have their sign all there, all summer long. But, with their sign being up there, no one else can put a sign there. So should we make accommodations for another sign, or should we? Or should we, should we figure out some way that we can accommodate?
I'll tell you the best way, no signs.
Well, I, and I'm, I'm not.
I know, I, I know, but that don't work either.
The Farmer's, the Farmer's Market though, didn't they, like, I know, didn't they, they put it up when, when they're there, I'm riding, they take it down, like, if you go, I don't know.
Which one, the Farmer's Market on Thursday or?
Not the, not the street market, the Farmer's Market, the one right, right straight out here. Do they, did, I, I, I bet they, I thought they put it up and take it down when they're there.
No, they, they've been good, um, they'll leave it up most of the year. If there's somebody else that wants to put a sign up right there, I'll give them a call, they'll come and take it down that, like, that day or the day after somebody else put a sign up. They'll take theirs down, theirs goes back up.
Because I.
The other side is a little more of a challenge to get that swapped out.
I, I find it, we, we have a great looking park.
I know.
And I, and then you throw these Farmer's Market and have it all summer, no, no more than the Street Market all summer. It just, it, I think, uh, the, this, this past week going with the two signs, it looked pretty shabby.
Well, I think you should just tell them that they can leave their sign up unless somebody else has something that's coming up, like the Apple Festival, you take that sign down and have just the Apple Festival sign up. And, uh, anybody, I mean, like, I don't know what else, well, like the car show. You know, I think they should, if the car show wanna put two banners, they should take the other two down and put them up, and I think that's where basically, I guess, we're trying to regulate it and have them go by this policy. You got two weeks unless, so you could change your wording there, you have, you know, unless someone else has to put a banner up, you take yours down or, or something, you know? You wanna be fair to everybody, but you can't, but every, some people just take advantage.
You wanna be fair to everybody, and you also, I think signs are important to get the community involved. And a lot of people don't monitor Facebook all the while, or the town website, or whatever. I mean, it's a great thing for a lot of people, but it's also people that don't. So a sign makes a big difference.
Yeah, if you got somebody just driving through town and they see it.
Exactly.
Well, because I look, I think it's good we have them there, but if, if we do, like, we're going to be, uh, they're in the process of putting the stick figures up for Halloween. A lot of people drive by, they see it and they goes, oh yeah, but, but if it had a banner that explains something, that's, that's another form of mark, all it is is marketing, and, and I I just think we have, we can, we can do better.
Well, why don't we sell every, every section, let somebody buy it, put a sign and billboard there, you know? What happens is exactly what I said when we wrote that, is we were going to have signs all over the park and you won't see the park for the signs, and that's what's happened. I, if it was me, I wouldn't have one of them in there. But I said that already, so I won't repeat myself.
Anecdotal comment to Jay's point. We occasionally hear from people that come into the store. Oh, I see you having, uh, the, the, the park, some park currents, what's that all about? We talk to them about it, oh, cause they're at a campground here. And, you know, sometimes they're, they're coming from quite a ways away to get the trailer fixed, and they see it, they see the sign, and they gotta come back to see that. So.
My point exactly.
I think we just regulate them.
I know I'm not.
No, I know, yeah, but, I just, I just feel it, it should be put in here that, you know, you're gonna follow this procedure, and if somebody has something else coming up, you take your sign that's been there for three weeks, you have to take it down, let the other people put their signs.
That's, that's fair, I mean, it, it, you know, and you should be used to the Friday and Thursday things a little more than, than new things.
The things that happen all summer long do not need a sign, in my mind, all summer long, the Street Market and the Farmer's Market. Okay, when, on Friday, when you have the Street Market, put the sign up, anyone driving through town will see it.
Even if you put it up on Wednesday.
But if you took it down after Friday, it doesn't have to be up.
A day or two before sometimes is sufficient, yeah.
I, I think.
For that kind of.
The only one is that, when we have the, what is it, the wood choppers or lumber? Well, not a sign just nailed. Sign just nailed to the lumber post.
It did.
Um, you know, take the sign down, let them get a nice banner and put there.
Put, put the banner in there.
You know? Not have an axe hanging out the.
So with all this feedback.
I like that better than I do the peaches, plastic.
Yeah, but I mean, the last time, it, it was on a piece of plywood, and he just sprayed it on with paint and nailed it there.
Maybe a little.
The other ones, the ones with the axes up were kind of, they were kind of.
That's what I was just looking for, okay? With the, we've given you, you're going to.
You got it, yeah, so, so it's, in practice, what the board just talked about is what we've been trying to implement was, you know, if you've been up there for three weeks, take it down and give somebody else a chance. And put it back up later. So, I'll figure out some language to, so that way when somebody comes, I can just handle the policy.
We're not just picking on anybody. Okay, enough said for now. Um, things happening around.
What's up? So, happening, so we talked last time about the Red House presentation, that's still happening, Sunday the 25th. This Sunday, the 25th, at 2:00 PM, at the Legion, the American Legion on south side of town. Uh, so if you're interested in a little bit of Fairhaven history, that should be a good time. Uh, also, the itty-bitty committee has started their stick figure project. Um, the time to pick up that stick figure was actually last Saturday, but if you're interested, reach out to Town Hall. Um, Jay Brown has a contact that, uh, he knows where he can get a stick figure, so.
Or they'll just show up at your house.
Yep, so, reach out to us, you'll see the stick figures going up, uh, October 1st and 2nd, so.
There are still, there are still, um, seventeen available.
Seventeen.
And what is the theme?
I don't think they have one this year, I think it's going to, they're going to let people do, I think, no, I.
She said there's no theme, then people don't want one this year.
They, they.
I picked up my, my stick figure.
But they, so they're going, anybody can do whatever they want, as long as it's not real gory or something like that. They don't want that, they want, you know, they've been, people have been very good last, I think this is the third year of it, fourth, third or fourth year, and.
You're a lot of good comments.
They've had some really, really nice ones.
It wa, it was, it was just a very pleasant thing during COVID.
Yeah.
It really was, people made a lot, a lot of comments about it, and there was a lot.
Yeah, I think we had, at one time, I think there was thirty-three, thirty-four. I know. Unfortunately.
It's good for you, Jay.
Yeah, I know, it keeps me out of trouble.
Keeps you off the streets.
That's all you got, okay.
Two things coming up.
Parking lot, uh, Adams Bridge, Adam Street Bridge sounds a little bit disappointing.
No, yeah, I do have, uh, I do have a call with them to see where we stumbled again. I just don't think we have the population, I think they look at us and say, we're not going to give $2 million to 3,000 people.
I still, I still say a temporary bridge over top that one. I mean, you don't need a lot of, the bridge, the one they had in West Haven, there wasn't a long, it doesn't have to be high, because it can almost set on what's there, because you've got the steel beams. You don't have to have a lot of.
Long just spreads out the weight.
Right, you know, but you can have it just for cars.
Basically, that's all it's for.
It's all it should be anyways, but, um, I went down through 103 the other day, they're putting in a new bridge. They got one of them Army Corps bridges there.
Right.
That you go across, they set up for everything, for trucks, all nine yards. You know, I mean, it's got to be something out there that they could cover that bridge with. I still think I-beams over top that would take care of it, but, because, you know, I know, again, I don't want to say when I worked in the other town, but we had one going to the cemetery, and that's what they'd done out there, they put three I-beams down and planked it. And it was there for, God, until like, the state put the new bridge in. And they ran, you know, the trucks across to go up to the cemetery and everything else, so. I just, you gotta, you've got sides, you know, so, I mean, you don't, I'd say if you had a good angle, angle, or, you know, some I-beams, and go across, but that's just my thought. I just would like to see it for emergency situations, that's why I like to see it open. I mean, we're beating our head against the wall again, trying to get money from the, to help.
Has anybody, has anybody got a report on just how bad that bridge really is?
It's, yes, we have a report from 2012.
Is it real bad?
The, the deck is bad, the, the abutments, the things that are into the, the banks there, those are, in 2012, those were still good.
So you could, so you could run a beam across there to them.
It's, you know, it's our bridge.
Well, that's, I mean, that's where I'm getting at, I mean, just open it up for, for cars, I mean, that's.
Well, Neil, Neil's thing wasn't crazy, it was just Neil Robinson's.
Yeah.
They're, they're giving away the steel from the Verz, uh, from the, um, Tappan Zee Bridge. So they're taking it all down, I don't know if they have any left, but they were giving it away at one time. Big, like, steel planks, uh, not planks there.
I just, I just think we should look into something.
The old Tappan Zee.
Right, we adjust.
And those bridges were the Corps of Engineers, that's where those, so, the bridges came from. I mean, the one in West Haven was up there, that's where it came from.
Sure is the covered bridge that somebody else wanted in.
No, no, these are just, these are steel bridges, they just layer it up, you know?
Gone belly bridges.
Yeah. Yeah, they're good bridges, I mean, well, let's think of all, any alternatives? Um, anything else on here jumps out at you? That, we are having a meeting with the zoning regulation with the, with the RRM C tomorrow, or, um, EC, um, so their ref will be here tomorrow, we will probably get a finalized copy. Not sure if he's coming with one, or if we're going to amend it and he's going to send it to us. There's a few things, um, that I want to talk about, and I, and I think I told you guys, uh, um, lessening the, the setbacks in the, in the side things and stuff like that, because they said that, they say that we're way, way heavy compared to other towns with small, compact little areas, you know, so like, we deny a lot of people putting a porch up, because they don't have the setback or the side back, side things and stuff like that, so. Like ours may be thirty, and pull them down to fifteen or something like that, you know?
So if you, if you do that, just for discussion, I guess, if you do that, could you still have it where you had to get, um, an agreement from their neighbor?
That, that's part of it, I think, too, and, and that would be my suggestion.
Because, I mean, if, you know, you don't want somebody just throwing up some kind of a crappy thing, because they, you're within the setback, you know?
Oh, yeah, and I, and I have one example of where somebody did that, and it's, it's four feet over the, it's an overhang, and it's four feet over the other person's property, and she doesn't want to fight because she's old.
But, you know, that, I mean, the, the change your setbacks, that's the only thing, I'd want to make sure that was still in there, that, you know, you had to have an agreement with your neighbor about, you know, what was going on.
But anyways, that, so that, we should have a lot of progress tomorrow, and then we go into the town plan, so.
Who are you meeting with?
Uh, we're meeting with the, the, the regional.
A regional?
Yeah, so Rutland Regional Planning Commission representative, I think it's going to be Ed Boe, uh, who's now freelancing for them. And, uh, and then we'll go right into the town plan after that. And Glenn had some suggestions, the town plan make a lot of sense, so we will incorporate that, I'm sure. Anything else? Um, board roundtable.
Okay, I just want to say a couple of things, uh, our town crew's been up on Scotch Hill doing some ditching, and, uh, I think they've, I think they're really on the right track. It's a big improvement up there from what we've had in the past. Um, once we get the favors up there to get that shim, it'll be somewhat decent for the winter. And we just need to continue more of this. Uh, I appreciate what they do. And, uh, another thing is, we're, of course, trying to develop these property sales for more tax base, which I think is good. Um, but if anybody's got any more ideas as far as to, uh, up our tax base, it would be a wonderful opportunity to bring it forward. You know, do the best we can. I'm thinking every day, I drive around just thinking about it, it's just, we got to do something. And then, I already mentioned about the town barn, if we do move that, we got to get it done all at once, somehow, some way.
I think the only way that we really can, are going to be able to do something like that, is we're going to have to have a town vote for a bond, don't you agree?
I don't think we're going to save our way into that, I agree.
I mean, isn't that the only way that you're going to look at, I mean, it'd have to be, it'd have to be a vote by the town. I mean, and it's, it wouldn't be cheap, I mean, let's face it.
Oh, the salt shed costs seven hundred, fifty thousand, a million dollars for my.
I think you can build a town barn nice.
I, I gotta believe we could get it all done for that, I really do.
I do, too.
I really do.
Well, I, y- yeah.
But, you know.
I'm, uh, I agree with you, except that I just saw what happened with the salt shed.
I know.
You know?
I know.
But the, the point is, is it's the old story about, you know, too many fingers in the pot.
So, middle, where I live in Middletown, they put a, they had a bond for a new town hall, which passed, and it was like two million, just about two million, just before COVID hit. After COVID, we've been priced out, and it was not extravagant. So, they're in the same position.
So it didn't happen?
It didn't, it's, they got the, they got the bond vote, but prices went way up.
Yeah.
So, and it wasn't, I mean, it, it was nice because it was new, but it wasn't big, it was, they did well with what they, what they tried to get.
And, and one other thing that, you know, I know I mentioned it last month about, uh, our last meeting, about sidewalks and stuff like that. Now, there's a big need for some of these streets, not every street needs sidewalks. There's a lot of it don't need it, but there's a couple, three, that we really should pursue getting something done with them. Because they're, in my opinion, unsafe to walk down.
I agree.
Get a list together?
I can give you a list, yeah.
I mean, I, so, so we can start planning, because we do a certain amount of sidewalks as we can, we might just go get them focused.
Agreed.
Oh, yeah.
Really?
Yeah. I'd like to have the police, or, or police chief, or somebody go up with the cars on Mechanic Street in front of that daycare. They're parked in the road, you come down through a bus or something, you got it, you're on the other side of the road, right close to the intersection. If somebody whips around that corner fast, they're going to hit them. And the cars are the same, and they, they park there 24/7.
Which, which, which ones?
It's the daycare on Mechanic Street, it's the second house in.
Park on the grass.
Well, if they don't have parking, they shouldn't have got a permit. That's my feeling, I know you have to have so much parking to have any kind of a business, and if they don't have parking, why, why would they?
I don't remember that even getting a.
Oh, they've been there.
Does the town issue a permit for something like that?
I don't know, I would think they'd have to.
I don't know, I don't remember that coming.
Well, if they just do something about the parked cars, or, I mean, they've got a lawn, they could park them out if they had to. Um, but they're there every, they're, you come in at 10 o'clock at night, and two of them would be parked there, and they're facing the wrong way, you know, I mean, it's just.
But it faces the wrong way, it lights on.
Talking about.
It's the second house on the left, as you go, heading up the, toward the school, you've got where, where Sharon's lived, that's the next house up.
Oh, Mike Sharon place.
I don't know, I don't know whose it is, but it's just, I think it's a hazard, in some, you know, at least see if they can't do something different.
Yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about, and it's, it's, yeah, it's been.
Is that Shaw Moffel?
Oh, no, 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 it's, it's back down this way.
Okay.
Uh, and then, I got a call yesterday about Furnace Street, their water was puddling, not going into the, the new manholes. So I took a ride up, and I called the lady back, and I just said, when they do their finished paving, it's going to be high enough where the water's going to run into the culverts. I don't think, I don't think it's a real problem. Right at the end of her driveway, there's kind of a puddle, and so that might be something she'll have to take care of herself, but as far as the water that's puddling in the street, I believe it's going to, once it's paved, I think it's going to be fine.
Which, uh, do you know which end it was? That way I can make sure they take care of it.
It's, it's, um, right, just about in the middle, where they put the new drywalls, oh, drywells in.
The two that are right in the middle?
They're, they're not in the middle, they're in, and the people, I believe they're on their sidewalk, right, or on their walkway there. But that's where it was, and I went up and, like I said, I called her back and just told her that I thought it'd be taken care of when they repave it. And I thought, in the policy, or, I don't know if it's policy or not, but when somebody uses a park, I thought they were responsible for picking up their own garbage.
They should be, uh.
Well, they didn't Saturday, and there was a couple bags that were ripped open, the town guys picked them up Monday. But I was always under the impression that the person using, whoever was using the park took care of their own garbage.
I'll, I'll let the folks know.
Okay. And let's see. One thing for spring, and this goes back, we just, we talked about it the other night there, when we were at the thing with the, the concerts. What's the chance of having a sidewalk painted by the merchants' bank, or the commercial community bank, to the entrance of the park, in the middle of the park? Because a lot of people cross there when the concerts are going on, and I just think if it was marked. I know we got one just down the street, but this would go right directly, right into the entrance in the park.
Isn't that on a new plan, isn't there one scheduled for there?
It would, it would be nice if there was something there, let me ask and see what we can do.
Okay, just.
It would be nice to have that.
Yeah, I don't, you, you don't have to do it now, but I'm saying, in springtime, and that was one of the requests that we got, or they talked about the other night, was getting all the crosswalks painted before they start doing the Apple Festival, or, I mean, concerts. Just so that people, you know, and put the signs, like you said, that, uh, Bill had gotten to go on the sidewalks, you know, the, so that's going to help also. And I guess that's about it, other than this part-time police officer we have here. He worked, according to this paper, he worked seventy-three and a half hours for two weeks. And it's one thing that he was out on the road job, because that's something different, but now they've got him at the Fairhaven Grade School, four days a week, he was on, at the Fairhaven Grade School.
Doing what?
I don't know.
Instead of Kerber, maybe?
Maybe Kerber was on vacation.
Well, the thing of it is, this is going to come back and bite us in the butt. I mean, we're going to have a fifth officer, whether we want it or not, because he's working way over what he should be.
I, I, I do believe the construction job is coming to an end this week or next, but, so it'll be.
But he uses them all the time, and I don't think that's right, I just, we're going to get, we're going to get hammered, and it's going to cost us. Not saying nothing against him, Mark's a good person, he does a good job, but he's not full-time here. And, you know, he can go back and say, look, I'm working thirty hours a week, I want insurance. So, I'd like to see it curbed a little bit. We have four officers here. That's all I got.
Sure.
Well, I think I have one more, but I can't read it.
Well, if you get to it, whatever, so.
Yeah, I was going to mention the, uh, the crosswalk signage as well, I didn't realize we had, uh, we had signs already, so that is good to hear, but.
Yeah, they just got them, though, we hadn't had them before.
They're, they're, they're supposed to be coming soon.
Somebody, it looked like somebody, the last ones we had, they were intentionally smashed down.
Could be.
They, they would come out of the gas station and hit both of them on their way out.
Okay. Uh, I just, I want to echo what Richard's saying. You know, I, I think the constant thought in my mind is how do we increase the tax base and bring folks in? I go back to our last meeting around wanting to jump into some sort of marketing campaign. And I, I think it might be worth a while, a while adventure to, uh, perhaps reach out to the Cassaton Marketing, uh, major and see if there are any students who might be interested in developing a marketing campaign for a town. I, I know that there are some marketing interns that get put into other businesses around the area. This might be a, a good, uh, a good partnership with Lobbo University, uh, opportunity for some students and we would certainly benefit from, you know, whatever they might be able to do for us.
Certainly worth a try.
That's all I have.
Only thing on that same line, if we're going to increase the, the base, um, one of the things that we may want to start looking at is our version of, I think TIFF is the, what it's called, where you, where a municipality, uh, takes and you take and get money and the town actually invests to put the, the, the building in place, whether they, and it's, uh, it costs you money short-term, long-term. It, it increases the base by quite a bit. And, and what I'm talking about is, you know, when we, I think, Joe, you brought it up a few times about, uh, do you consider the town looking into some of the empty space or, or a building or an empty storefront? And do you do something to get a business started? I think we're going to have to do, and if, it's not going to magically happen on its own. I think it's going to take something. Uh, when I asked the question about the TIFF money that you see in the news that's going on and, uh, Burlington and killing different places, they ran out of TIFF sponsored helping money. Uh, but I still think there's a, there's a way we might be able to, to do, I don't know what that is yet.
Well, I'll tell you what, you reach out to Virgens. What they did, what they did is they took like the empty spaces and, and they contracted with the owners of the empty spaces for their downtown in particular. And they let people come in and use it for a, a gallery. Maybe they did a showing. They did whatever, um, any kind of thing like that. What it did was it filled the spaces. It made them bright and, and, you know, people could see them, stop. They look around. All of a sudden they see a potential of another place. Oh, maybe this is what I want to do. Or the people that started the gallery for, there was going to be a pop-up gallery for a week, got all kinds of businesses. So why aren't, why don't I rent a place? And that's how, and that's how, that's how Virgens, um, changed their downtown. And as you, you go down there now and it's just a vibrant place. I mean, for God's sakes, how many places can have two consignment shops making a lot of money and looking nice, not looking like a junkyard, looking like, and, you know, they, they really turned around. It took a little while. And they, there was, I, I'm sure the town had to go, come up with some money somehow. But if we, you know, if we paid the rent for two months for a place that's open downtown and let people come in there and, and set up and, and be fancy and do stuff, you know, maybe have a, have a showing or whatever. Um, it worked for, it worked for Virgens. And it's not just art galleries now. It's clothing stores and, and, um, um, restaurants and, and all kinds of neat stuff. And it's just because they started small. They didn't try to do big. Possibility.
That's a good point. So ahead.
Okay. Um, I'd like to have more discussion about the line item thing. I think that's, that's an interesting, um, thought. I, I get what Rod's saying about, um, transparency and what, how it goes, but we could build that, we could build that into the, in, you weren't here for that. Um, Liz was saying, she had a really nice presentation about the electronic and she, she did her homework. And she, she recommended against it because it doesn't talk to them or, long story, you'll see it, but, um, but one of the things she said, if you wanted to, if you wanted to, um, lower the cost and the time is, is in doing payroll is to do a, uh, to do a, um, uh, like just say, you don't have to do every line item for every two hours that they did anything, you know? She has to code all that. Let's go through, should eliminate that. I mean, that, we need to find out where, where they're spending money. There's no doubt about that. But there seems like there's an opportunity there that we could look.
Yeah, because that, that could be in just the, the form and can, or the manager.
Right, that's, that was, that was their suggestion. That was their suggestion.
You know, we're paying them eight hours a day. So, you know?
Right.
And if he, you know. Anyways, uh, but he could just write a report on what he'd done or something. And then, you know, bring, and so we know, we see what's going to, or even what Joe just said.
You could keep that coded.
You know, and then just do summer maintenance, eight hours a day. Uh, winter maintenance, eight hours a day.
Yeah, well, they don't, the state doesn't even require that anymore.
The winter and summer maintenance?
No, have them separated out. That's what she does. Uh, she put on a.
I'll, I'll read her if I'm sure, girl. She'll have a good thing in her.
Make sure that, you tell her that. I mean, she, that was for, first time in front of the board, as far as I know, she did very well. I, I thought she was, she makes me feel confident about what's going on in there.
She's great. Can, can I add something to it?
Yeah.
Um, I, I actually missed it in my, in my present, in my, uh, manager report. And can I see a copy of yours? So, so this is the, this is actually for two of us. So this is the, that's your DPW budget. And so all of those right there on the bottom, now, those are all your pay lines that DPW is paid from. So every time if they do a little bit of work, plowing, I go back and I fix the building. I'm going to grease the equipment. Oh, and by the way, uh, I don't know.
I went for a donut, Rod.
I went for a donut and I spent another half hour with the transfer station. There's like six lines she has to hit for pay lines. So that's, that's kind of an example of, of, that's all the lines that they hit. And it is very onerous. So, but this is the most difficult thing we'll deal with in terms of our budgeting. Um, and I, I don't know how else, I don't know how to make it easy. So this is my attempt. Um, on the top here, you'll see all of DPW staff, their salaries, the budget increase, and then all of that totaled out. But down here, you'll see summer work. And on the other side, you'll see the percentage that they work on average over the last four years. So if you hold on to this, when you see your budgets come out in October fourth, you'll see that number for summer work, whatever that is, ninety-five? Is it ninety-five?
Ninety-five.
You'll see that in your summer work portion. Uh, winter work will be that number and that's all allocated by the percentage of time the staff work those line items.
Actual work?
Well, they say they work. So that, that's that small presentation. And it's just lucky that Liz was here. So, but this is, this is our hardest thing to deal with because it crosses all, almost all departments, water, sewer, and DPW. So that's for you to peruse.
Well, the other, the other question is, are we going to get an update of required department investigation?
I got it right there.
So that will be in, in executive session?
Yes.
Okay.
Andrew, I've, I've spoke with the legal about, with legal about this. So this is attorney.
Yep, that, that's fine. I, I just want to make sure we work. And one more thing, and I will ask this, and it's a very selfish question, but, uh, is there any interest in changing the meeting date to Monday?
Yes.
That's, it's a very selfish answer.
Uh, and, and I'll tell you why, because I'm also on the Regional Planning Commission and I miss all the meetings because we're here. And I, I like being on the Regional Planning Commission, but I, I'm committed here. So if, if I can't do that, then if we can't go to Monday, then, then we got to find somebody else for the.
I am a first Monday of every month is economic development. I can change it to the first Tuesday and not have, if, if it's okay with the.
It's entirely up to you guys. I mean, it, it's, but I, and, and like I said.
Well, what if we change instead of the first and the third, do the second and the fourth? Would that make it, oh, we can't because, we can't because of warrants.
When I was on there, you would, you would make about half the meetings. You miss, you miss about half the meetings.
You miss about half the meetings and it's just, it, I don't think it's fair to the town of Fairhaven not to be represented every time. And so I, it's either that or we got to find somebody else.
I just, uh, my, the only thing I think I, it would mean, would that mean that Liz would then have our paperwork ready on for that? Uh, Monday, a lot of things come together that, that need, we need for the meeting.
That's what my hand was up for.
Oh, I, so I, I, I personally am a Tuesday person, but I mean, I'll make whatever the board decides.
Well, it's, it's going to be tough on the, on the staff.
I didn't know what.
Well, Monday would be extraordinarily difficult. Um, Wednesday would be fine, any day but Monday.
Okay. All right. Well, then let's just, that's the end of the discussion.
Wednesday.
We need to find somebody else. We need to advertise for the art, the regional. Cause, uh, I, you just can't, I don't think I can, I don't think it's reasonable to ask somebody to go half the time.
Well, how, how many times a month is that meeting?
Um, it's once a month.
Once a month.
But it's Tuesday. And it's, you know, it's.
Yep.
Usually they take July and August off.
They take, take July and August off, but, uh, still.
What if they could move to Monday?
Yeah, why don't they move theirs?
They, they, they're meeting, right. They were meeting tonight.
Of which regional?
I figured out my.
Rutland Regional Planning.
I figured out my writing.
Yeah.
We already discussed it. It was about Pike.
Oh.
And I did scratch this up, Joe. You had two thousand and ten instead of two thousand and twenty-two. But I'm going to put this here with the warrant, okay?
Oh, we're ready.
Okay, so we got some expenditure.
Right. We're ready for the financials?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the payroll of thirty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Make a motion to approve the warrant of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seventy-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents. It were, okay.
You want to say?
There were a few big items that, that were in there. One was Casella, one was a bond payment.
Insurance, maybe it was.
Insurance was, Blue Cross was one of them. A bond issue, a bond, what did they say? I just read it through it. It wasn't a. It was engineering. It was a hundred and, that was eleven thousand dollars. Blue Cross was sixteen thousand. Casella was twelve thousand and, yeah, bond payment, forty-nine thousand.
Okay, everybody know what we're voting on? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The opposed, thank you.
And the checkbook is a hundred and eighty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-one cents.
Make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Are we going to, let's just check this. Okay, uh, now I'll make a motion to go in executive session for personnel attorney-client communication under one VSA three thirteen A one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.